We'll go ahead and call this Albernate City Regular City Council meeting on Thursday, July, June 10th, 2001 at 7:00 PM, City Hall, through order, and we'll rise and say we have the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle will do a roll call.
Counselor Trump?
Present.
Counselor Shans?
Present.
Counselor Bosenberg?
Present.
Counselor West?
Present.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded by Sean, seconded by Trump, all those in favor. Sheriff report, he's gonna be late because they just went north out of town. Public hearing, so we're gonna go ahead at this time, we're gonna open a public hearing for the FY 21 budget amendment. And if anybody has any questions about it?
I haven't received any questions I'm concerned.
So, okay, and there's none from the council, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for FY 21 budget amendment, number 701 to 702. And the next, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance number 2021-1, an ordinance for amending the code of ordinance for the city of Albernate by the main division of the flood plan management. So everybody got that covered?
I always think I thought we were working on the budget.
We just have the public hearing for it.
Oh, what did you not do?
No, that'll be greater than resolution.
This is the first public hearing for the ordinance up here. And is there any questions, any additions to it, Danielle, nothing?
I didn't receive any notification from anybody for what was published.
Okay, so we'll go and open at 7:03 and then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing by the ordinance 2021-1 at 7:04. Okay, we'll go to the mayor's report, Bethany didn't have any, she didn't share anything with me, so we'll go back to council report. TJ, anything? Chester? Nope, Joe?
Nothing.
You guys are making this easy. Okay, any citizens want to comment on the agenda items? You have five minutes. Seeing none, go ahead and, do any citizens want to know the non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll go into the written reports for the fire department. Steve, you're up.
Um, Cam talked to Guy about how much money is left in the budget and we tried to use it off this year. We bought some hose, I guess I might need approval to purchase hose, sixteen rolls up in secret order, sixteen rolls up to and a half, come out to a price of six thousand something.
Sixty-six thirty-five. Six thousand six hundred thirty-five.
What's that for?
Just have hose for the fire station, we don't have pregnant hose.
You mean like?
Fire hose.
Small old fire hose, okay.
Yeah. We're just trying to use up the budget and the guy had some on hand and we ordered some.
Does that give you sufficient hose now or are you gonna need to buy some more in the future?
Probably down the road, but this will be a slide.
Not next year or the year after, what are you thinking?
Um, maybe not next year, but maybe a year or two.
Is that something that you guys will have on the inventory? Hose and useful life and stuff?
Yeah, I still got that. Get your, we have to, that's the deal.
Where are you storing it? Where are you, you had racks or something?
Yeah, we bought a hose rack.
Oh, you bought a hose rack, okay. Do you need a motion to approve that bill for hoses?
Yeah, for six thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars to Hyman Fire Equipment.
So, is the right to make the motion? I'm going to approve the expenditure to Hyman Fire Equipment for new hose in the amount of six thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Awesome.
Seconded? Okay, TJ. Approved by Trump, seconded by TJ, all those in favor? Motion carries.
And then I gave her a bill for the turbo camera, it's not in yet, it's been shipped, I wanted to get it paid this month on this budget. And then I have a bill for batteries for 134.
We got to see those.
All of those are in the claims.
Okay.
Because they've already been.
Okay.
The battery, yeah.
Or do you want that one?
Yeah, the batteries for 134 is kind of a repair, so I mean, if it didn't get voted on, it doesn't really matter, it's two hundred and twenty-four dollars, so.
I'll put it in the claim.
It happened at 10 o'clock.
I'll put it in the claims, add it to.
Went down, got them.
Okay. Be anything else, Steve? I think that's it. Okay, you got your calls and everything in here, so.
One quick thing, the fire chief from Reinbeck would like to look at your new fire station, so I'm trying to get him to pin down a date that he can come and then I'll let you know if he can come, that'd be great, otherwise I'll give him a tour, so.
Our show's this weekend?
Next weekend.
Next weekend, that's my schedule.
Next weekend, yeah. Okay, Guy, public quirks, you're up.
Uh, yeah, only thing to add is the scag mower came back today, so, uh, yeah, this is the second time we've had to replace fuse holders, not that it's a big deal, but, and they said the battery was bad, and the battery's only about a year old, and so I still think there's something underlying ongoing, but they claimed they did every test they could and it's done. The bill, I didn't even get the bill brought inside because we just picked it up today, but it was a couple hundred bucks to fix it, so not a, I think it was a hundred ninety-seven, not a big deal, but, um, a little frustrating that we've fried the fuse holders before, but they did put bigger fuse holders in and bigger fuses, so hopefully that doesn't lead to bigger electrical problems, so.
Yeah, right.
I don't know, but anyway, that, and finally going to have dust control up at the shop Monday or Tuesday. I've been calling and trying to pin them down and they are promising me Monday or Tuesday it is a dust bowl up there, so, um, they should be there. The one other thing is, I'd like to ask for your permission to possibly use the city skid loader for Alliance Club project that we're doing for the school, we're trying to set some light poles in the parking lot of the foundation or the sports complex, and Price Electric is allowing us free use of a special clamp that rotates to pick the poles up and stand them up and set them in, and I borrowed a skid loader from Dan Sherman, but it doesn't have the right electrical connection, and I'm not positive ours does either, but trying to figure out a way to get those things set without the school or the Lions Club or anyone having to hire an expensive lineman, lineman's truck to come set those poles, because the Lions Club did take that project on, hoping we could get it done, thinking everything would be a lot easier than it is, so, um, we've used the skid loader for Lions projects before, you've allowed it, wondering if it would be okay this time as well.
I don't see any reason. I don't see any reason, what do you think, Josh?
I'll be the only one driving it, obviously, and et cetera, so.
Yeah, I think you'll be all right.
Okay, thank you. And maybe we won't even use it, it might not have the right connection, I don't know.
We need to get a neighbor.
That's what I was hoping you would say, yes.
They're gonna put lights on this pole?
Yeah, yeah, they got, they found some solar lights, actually, they're, Danny found, saw them at a park down in, down south of Xavier High School, they're really, really, actually quite strong solar lights that last well into the night, so there's no wiring having to be run, so.
Hmm, cool.
Yeah, get a little light in that parking lot on those dark football nights and et cetera, so.
Just that skid loader doesn't?
Oh, and, and I'm gonna start hydro, uh, hydro flushing on Monday if you didn't see the flyers or the Facebook posts, so.
If that skid loader doesn't work, you might try Dave Reed, he has one too.
Yeah, I don't know if his has an electrical outlet, but, thank you, yes.
Okay, you want the guy? At this time, okay, then Danielle, you got chairs?
Yeah, just keeping you on your toes again. So, this is my report, if you do have any questions or concerns after you look at it, feel free to reach me at City Council anytime. We're still working on the sidewalk assessments, we have two properties left, um, one isn't making monthly consistent payments since we sent the first round of, um, payment arrangement options, one of the other properties did make a payment for half of the balance that was due, um, and had asked if the council would allow for a payment plan, so after some discussion with the mayor, we put together a payment plan that extends to the end of the year, um, and sent that to the property owner, the first payment is due at the end of June, um, I haven't heard back if the payment plan, if the property owner is wanting to go ahead with the payment plan, um, so at the end of June, I should know, um, and have more for you guys on that, um, to see if there's next steps that we need to consider. Um, I have all of the nuisance properties that we've been working on and doing assessments on listed there, as well as the current statuses, we're, um, trying to go around and, uh, review properties in town as we are able to and do the assessments and be consistent with all the properties, and, um, slouches are run down of the ones that we're currently working on, um, I have my upcoming schedule on there with some events listed, I have some training in Ames coming up in July, um, we've been talking about water rates and reviewing our water rates to ensure that, um, they meet our expenses and are sufficient, and so next week, um, Chris McKee from the Midwest Assistance Program is coming onsite to look at our, um, revenues and expenditures and do an assessment with me in person, so I'll have more information in, oh, sorry, I'll have more information in July on that. Um, and then also just a couple of things to consider that we have previously talked about, but that we'll wanna kind of, um, get input on next month, will be that fire station community room, I know in our, I think at our last meeting, we had looked at a potential rental policy, rental rates, what that looks like, I know, um, we had not really discussed it previously with the fire department, so we want to get their input, and I've talked to Bethany about how do we communicate with the fire department on if there's a rental, um, how do we facilitate the calendar and planning and make sure that they don't have an event and how that, um, collaboration will work, so just something to keep in mind and be considering, and if you want another copy of that rental policy, I can get that for you, so, um, again, we'll be looking for in, input on the agreement that we proposed and costs and all of that and how we facilitate that. Um, also, we've had a couple of people contact the city about what our rental policy is in town, if, um, a property owner is to rent their home, do we do rental inspections, do we do licensing, and currently we don't have any of that, um, but some of the other small town city clerks have been talking about, is that something that we would want to look at putting in place, so I don't know if that's something that the city would be interested in, but it's definitely a conversation to consider having. Um, and then the library, we are excited to, um, start our contract with the Centerpoint Library on July 1st, I put a letter behind the, um, report there that the attorney drafted and sent to the Metro Library Network notifying them of the cancellation of contract, um, they have their meetings this month, and so if they decide to, um, deny access as they had previously stated, we should be hearing shortly if that does happen, um, and I'll keep you guys informed on that. Yes.
Back to nuisance payments.
Yes.
I notice that we're gonna be dealing with a large lawyer quite a bit.
Yes.
Now, do we have a way of recouping some of our attorney costs?
Um.
Like you're aware of?
Uh, I, I have an email that I can get you where we had discussed what it is that we're asking for, um, in regard to this specific violation, and it is not to cover those costs, um, but it is something that we can discuss and look at as far as the future, it kind of depends on the situation and how our attorney, um, files the paperwork and what our ordinance is state as far as what we can ask for and what the violations were, so it's something that we can definitely have a conversation about, but right now it would not include all of the costs that the city will expend.
I want to think about, we, I can talk, think back in history, I think Dave can remember, we spent about fifteen hundred dollars to get rid of four cars.
Mm-hmm.
You get the lawyers involved, they go to court and that, you can run up quite a bill in a hurry.
Yes, I agree, this is very costly already.
I'm not doubting the fact that they definitely are nuisance, they need to do something before someone gets hurt or whatever, but I would like to look into the possibility of recouping some of our expense if we have to go to court and all that.
Right, okay.
If you would please.
Yeah, I'll get some guidance on that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
One little added thing as far as nuisance payments goes, one household that's not on the list came in today and has a, presented a definite plan to get rid of a car, just a single car that's been there a long time, uh, and we also helped him out during the duration and he wanted to express his, his, uh, appreciation to the city council, we provided a generator, his wife was bedridden in a, there in the house, and so we provided a generator for about twenty-four hours to keep her air mattress pumped up and her hospital bed working, and so, he wanted to let you know that he very much appreciated that, I'll let you know off record who, who it was, so we're not mentioning, so. He wanted it known to the council, and they appreciated your patience with the car and the help with the generator, so.
That was nice.
Hey Danielle, you got the, one that you're asking for, uh, continuation of a payment? Is that?
Um, oh.
Something that you, you talk about now, or?
Um, we can discuss it now, it's, so there's two properties there, um, the one below that is the one that we abated in 2019 and we're continuing to monitor it, the one above it is one we've been, um, sending notices on for abandoned property, we did in one of our more recent notices say that the property owner needed to request, um, permits to get the property started in the process of no longer being an abandoned property within sixty days, and the property owner did do that, they pulled an electrical permit, um, and a mechanical permit to start moving toward getting that property ready to rent, um, but in regard to how long this has, the process has been going on, that would be definitely something that if you guys have input on that, um, you can, we can discuss it now or you can let me know what you're talking about.
The timeframe, you know, Danielle.
Well, it was the sixty days to pull those permits, and those permits have been pulled, they've been within that timeline, so that criteria was met, however, those permits were open and then closed because the inspections were completed to facilitate the electrical and the, the gas line, um, so that criteria was met, so it would just be how the council wants to continue with allowing timing to work on the property, the property owner continues to stop in and advise that they are working on the property, um, but this is a property we've been working with.
Are they ready to rent? Can I move in?
Cannot move in.
Do we need to say, give some, so many days to get it ready for?
It would be nice to have some guidance from council on how if you want to put a timeline on that, or if you want to buy your own.
Because aren't them permits like for six months or more?
Well, the permit, if you pull it, yeah, so if you pull a permit, it's good for twelve months.
Twelve months.
But if you, if it's closed, if they do any inspection, then it's done, you're done with it, so it doesn't, we don't have to allow that twelve month period.
So, do they need an actual building permit and to finish?
No, because he's not doing structural work or remodeling type work that would demand a building permit.
What you're looking, what we're looking for then is for, the council to decide sixty days, ninety days, or?
Right.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, and we had some concerns about the structural integrity of the house, but the property owner said that it's, it's fine, so I don't know.
And usually the county inspectors will have an eye open to that when they're in there looking at electrical and mechanical stuff, they, they would send up a red flag if they thought it was.
And if that's been, that's been approved, chances are property is safe for me to move in.
Yeah, well, yeah, depending on what kind of conditions you want to live in, yeah, safe for you to live in.
This might also go back to that conversation about rental properties and does the council want to consider having some sort of policy on rental inspections or rental licensing, something that would allow the city enforcement on if somebody's gonna rent a property, what kind of conditions it has to be in, what kind of maintenance, if there are any oversight on how the property is maintained for the people renting it. So, we can discuss that again further at the next meeting, but looking for guidance.
But that's kind of a new topic, do you have any feedback, many other cities or cities around that have done anything like that?
So, um, I've been meeting with the other clerks in the area, and they're all talking about getting something put into place if they don't already have something, looking at ordinances, um, we've been having meetings with ECI COG, the local council government, and to see what their, um, capacity could look like in helping facilitate that, if we do put some kind of rental inspection policy in place, could we have them contracted to come in and do the inspections if we say a grace, two years, you know, if you have a rental property, ask the inspector every two years, what does that process look like? So, it's definitely something that, um, the local communities are talking about, it's a gray area, you know, how much do we want to get involved and how much is it, you know?
I rent out several properties and I don't consider myself a small board.
No.
But depending upon who you rent it to, they can be not very understanding also.
Right.
So it's kind of a two-bladed.
Right.
So we're.
And there were some concerns in another community in the area with this last winter when there were really cold temperatures, property owners not, um, providing certain amenities and making sure that those amenities were working for the renters, um, again, that falls into that gray area of what does the city want to be involved with, but, um, it's definitely a good conversation to have and something to think about if we want to consider putting some kind of policy in place, but I will get more information on, um, what that could look like from the council governments, if we could get assistance with contracting for those inspections and if that is something you guys want to discuss.
To the point of this property, this is ongoing, and this is not, kind of, it's not.
This isn't a one-off.
This isn't a one-off, this is, is that house gonna get rented and timeline is solely up to you, we don't really have to wait for anything if you don't want to.
I think it's a, you know.
There's no reason to, he's been given an incredible amount of time, uh, to get this done, and so.
He's been playing for over a year.
Right, right, and then what you were just discussing would come into play after that.
Right.
As far as inspection and et cetera, but this, he's, he's had plenty of time.
And the ordinance states that, um, you know, the city will give, um, how is it worded? There's a, I can't think of the word right now, it will give a certain timeline based upon the property and what we're asking for within that ordinance, asking it not to be abandoned, um, so again, it would fall more to the council to decide how long do you want to continue to give, do you want to set a deadline, um, so.
Sounds like you said.
He could, he could take and pull it premier and wait a year.
Yeah.
Before he has to do it, then.
Right.
So you have to rent it for a year.
Well, the last excuse was the carpenter had a heart attack, what was it, one before that?
Yeah, I haven't been asked to turn the water on yet, so, there's no water in the house, it sounds like there's electric and gas, but no water yet.
And our ordinance states six months for abandoned property, and it's been, I think, well over ten years.
Yeah.
But there has been work happening.
And can what?
Over ten years.
Since there's anyone's lived in it.
Really?
Really?
Boy, I didn't know that.
I didn't know it was that long.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, with this particular property, it's not really about a, a current rental property that's just recently gone uninhabited, it's.
Been there.
It's either, yeah.
There's also another property that's abandoned, it's the second one listed there, um, we've sent multiple letters on that one as well for over a year, um, when we sent the first letter on that one, the property owner did, um, state that they were looking to renovate the property to get it ready to rent, or they were going to tear it down, that did not happen, um, then they did advise that because of COVID, they weren't able to get in to get their belongings out, that was the last I've heard, and that was, um, probably a year ago, so, that one will be another one that we'll have to, you know, we'd like their input on.
Well, if I'm thinking it's a house and I'm thinking there is no rent for now.
Yes, that's correct.
Large holes in the roof.
Yeah, and the floor is falling too.
Correct.
Well, I realize it's difficult to get somebody into repair now with the storm that we had, because I'm waiting for siding to get replaced, some other things, and either they can't get the siding or they're too busy, so, we need to be realistic, but I do think we ought to set a timeline, this has been way too long.
Yeah, at least make them come to you and prove if that timeline is not sufficient, that it's, then, you know, that you then would grant them more time if they can say to you, we can't get the contractor, we can't get the materials, we can't get whatever, if, but basically hold them accountable and make them prove to you as a council that they have been trying, they just can't because of current conditions, if you don't set a timeline, they can just open end it.
Twelve years instead of ten.
We also go on that same point, when we do set that timeline, we want to know what the city is going to be willing to do if the criteria isn't met, what actions are we going to take, and a little bit of that will follow me on getting that information pulled from the ordinance on what it states our next steps are, but we'll want to know, is the city going to can, tear down?
Condemn it?
Condemn it, yeah, condemn it or demo, like I think we have the right to demo it if it's, um, in a certain standing, and then assess those costs to the property owner, so, again, just what does that look like and what does council want to do at that point if nothing further has happened by that, that timeline? I doubt it will get to that, hopefully the property owners when we have this timeline will, you know, come to you and give their timeline, but just something else to consider as what would our next actions look like.
Well, there's no sense in setting a timeline if we aren't gonna go follow through.
Correct.
Maybe that should be in an agenda item for next month with more information.
I guess we should table it's next month and then get some more information on it then.
I'll get that information together and if you guys want to just give that some thought and then we'll reconvene in July, I don't know.
I don't think it's gonna be fixed by July.
Okay, but, uh, that's all with that, then we'll go ahead and look at the consent agenda and, okay, that, if there's.
I have some bills to add.
Okay, you got bills?
Okay. Bill from D and L Ag Repair for the battery for 130, fire truck number 134 for two hundred and twenty-four dollars. We have a bill from Sandry Fire Supply for the thermal imaging camera, that was previously approved, that was for eight thousand six hundred forty dollars, and then we have an invoice to Dan Sherman for equipment rental, um, there's some of this related. Um, this, some of this relates back to last October when we were pushing up the brush pile. We rented the paint.
Paint.
Pay holder. And then, um, excavator rental more recently. So we got those dates and times to Dan Sherman and their invoicing for those rental, um, dates. So that total is three thousand one hundred dollars. And we did submit the deratio portion to our feeing claim. Did you want any of those repeated? I hope we got in.
Oh, that was, yeah, I was motioning, I was telling, I'm sorry.
Okay. There's nothing else to add to it. I'll seek a motion. We accept it.
So move.
History, side motion, Trump seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
New business. TJ, you're up on this one.
Um, so it actually brought my attention, um, I had a delivery person asking where an address was on our street cuz they couldn't find it. Um, and I just kinda looked around and noticed that a lot of them were either faded or, you know, they're different on everyone's houses. There's not like a centralized area, I guess, for it. And I just didn't know kinda what the process was on that or, um, Brian had emailed me saying the last time was done by Boy Scout. So I just kinda wanted to bring it up and see, I know. I started, when I actually started looking around, there's no markings like on the curves or anything like that anymore. Or they're very faded. So I didn't know.
Do most of our, I mean, almost all of our homes have numbers on the outside of them somewhere, don't they?
Yeah, a lot of them do.
They should all have, shouldn't they? Is that in the ordinance?
I do not know.
I don't know.
Check on the ordinance service.
Almost think it's in the ordinance where they have to have their numbers posted. If they don't have their numbers, we need to, that's something we need to look at. And get them, and get their numbers posted on their house.
But it was just something I'd noticed and the guy had asked, I kinda looked around and just kinda noticed, so there's just something. I guess I just kinda wanted to bring it up, see what thoughts would have been or or if there was any, I guess, reasoning behind having them do it on the curb. So.
I don't, I don't know what kind of paint they used the last time, but it didn't last very long. About six months and it was gone.
I can't remember. It's been long enough ago. I don't ever remember.
I think we just allowed them to do it. I think it wasn't at somebody's, maybe Eagle Scout project.
Yeah, I just didn't know, so.
Well, the thoughts would have been on it with that. Eagle Scout.
Right. I don't know any.
Alan Miller works with the Scouts and, and it was mentioned to him and he was not opposed to suggesting that too.
If they do it, we're gonna get decent paint.
Right.
The thing of it is, the bad part is, it's only gonna cover about half the town.
Right.
Cuz if about half the town don't have.
With the curb, yeah.
Have the curb. Plus Main Street, it's, curb is like this. But I see, if we can get them to do it, I don't have a problem.
So I said that's something we need probably do is look around town and see, make sure everybody's got numbers on their houses.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should have. So in case you do have a fire call, at least you have the right house, right? Well, but, you know. Right. With the technology we have, if you're gonna go someplace, most of us are gonna put it into Google Maps and find it anyway, and I'm not gonna look at the curb. I mean, it's, it's a nice thing to have, but I'm not sure it's critical.
No, I didn't think so either. I just, like I said, I just kinda wanted to think that I noticed that I'd bring it up.
There's no further discussion then. We'll go ahead and move on to, uh, first reading of ordinance number two oh two one dash one, an ordinance amending the code of ordinance of, of the city of Albonet. I log by amending provisions parenting to the floodplain management. Floodplain management. First reading. Do you have anybody have any questions on it?
Nothing's gonna do much good. We gotta have it. Let's, let's be adults in a just.
So we'll go ahead then and I'll ask for a mo-, uh, a motion to accept that first reading of ordinance two oh two one dash one.
So move.
Chester made the motion. Seconded by Trump. Roll call.
Counselor Rosenberg?
Yes.
Counselor Sean?
Yes.
Counselor Sean?
Aye.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now at this time, we can go ahead and move to suspend the second, uh, reading and the third reading. We can do it both together.
Correct.
Yeah. Of ordinance two oh two one dash one. Something you wanna do?
Sure.
Sure. I'll move to suspend the considerations for ordinance twenty twenty-one dash one before the final passage requirement under the code.
I second that.
TJ seconded?
Yeah.
Roll call again.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Sean?
Aye.
Counselor Rosenberg?
Aye. Third reading.
The next one will be the passage of the ordinance.
Oh, passage, uh, okay, I'm sorry, pass of the ordinance. So we need a motion for the passing of the ordinance. Number two oh two one dash one.
I'll motion.
TJ may.
I'll second it.
Chester seconded. Another roll call.
Counselor Rosenberg?
Yes.
Counselor Sean?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're looking at the, the resolution oh six dash two oh two one dash oh one, resolution approving the FY twenty-one budget amendment. So we'll look for motion to get the information. Chester moved. Second. Trump seconded. All those in favor?
I'll do a roll.
Roll call, okay, didn't, well, I see.
Sir.
Roll call.
Counselor Rosenberg?
Yep.
Counselor, uh, Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Sean? Counselor West?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to resolution oh six dash two oh dash, uh, two one dash oh two. Resolution providing for the sale of the and insurance of the two hundred fifty thousand general obligation refunding bond, series oh two oh two one and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
So our financial advisor, Spear Financial, um, we put out a letter to our local bank to ask about assisting with the refinancing of the bonds as the current interest rate market has decreased, um, to save on interest. And after receiving the, um, the letter from the bank stating that they would, um, the proposal from the bank stating that they would be interested in, um, assisting with that, Spear has advised the city to, um, accept Farmer State Bank as they presented, um, for the refinancing of those bonds.
And what was that going to stages? Twenty, like twenty-five thousand or twenty-four thousand?
Twenty-four thou-, around twenty-four thousand over the next, um, ten years. So it'll be at a rate of one point eight five percent. And again, they did factor in the cost of issues. There was cost to do a refinancing, but that cost factored in still saved us around twenty-four thousand dollars to get that rate decreased. So, um, this resolution will just allow us to move forward with that process and get those bonds refinanced with Farmer State Bank.
So we'll seek a motion to approve the resolution number oh six dash two oh two one dash oh two. I move accept, uh, resolution oh six twenty twenty-one dash oh two. Moved by Trump.
Second.
Seconded by TJ. Roll call.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Sean?
Aye.
Counselor Rosenberg?
Aye.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have, the next one is our, our employee wages, uh, discussion and review for FY twenty-two. This one. Um, I will say that, um, when you're looking at it, Bethany asked me to share with you that she would prefer that we would look at giving them a grade one pay raise. For the year, for this year. She was, because of the work that they've had to do for the, the weight ratio and everything that's going on this last year. Do you have that in your packet? I believe, uh.
Is it, is she why she preferred why not a, a staff?
Yeah, yeah, a grade one. A staff or a grade, uh, a staff.
A grade or a staff?
Yeah, a staff. No, I'm sorry, no, not the graded staff.
So instead of being fours, they'd be fives, right?
Yes, they would be, yeah, Guy and Danielle would be fives and Lee would be a two. Yeah, so they would, uh, I can go in and go on. Lee would be increased by about forty-one cents. Danielle would be increased sixty-eight cents. And Guy would be increased seventy-five cents now.
Those are around three percent increases.
Yeah, yeah. That keeps us, it would keep us on track with the
Yeah.
The grade scale we have here. Any questions? Okay, I got a mark here. TJ, do you wanna see?
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah, there's marks, there's little ticks next to it.
Little marks on it. So is there any questions? Any discussion, if not, we retain the motion.
I'll motion to approve resolution zero six two zero two one dash zero three. In regards to the wage rates.
Let me decide on what way you're paying first though.
Something about the tricky resolution with the fucking.
I, can I make motion? I move we, uh, advance all the employees by one step grade on the salary schedule.
Do you wanna repeat that?
I, I move we increase the salary for all the employees by one step from their current, um, salary based on the city's, what do we call this, Danielle? Pay scale or pay?
Pay grade, pay scale.
Pay scale.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Trump. It's seconded by Chester. Roll call. Just, I mean, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now you wanna do the resolution. Now you wanna do the resolution.
And now we'll go ahead and do the resolution oh six dash two oh two one dash oh four. Approving the final.
Oh, no, no, that's not yet. You're up to oh three, right?
Yeah, I just kept oh three, oh three. I clicked it too soon. So we'll go ahead and for a resolution oh six dash two oh two one dash oh three. For paywa-, resolution setting employee, employee wages for the city of Albonet for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. Motion? I move we pass resolution oh six twenty twenty-one dash oh three. Make the motion.
Second.
TJ seconded. We'll have a roll call.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Rosenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Sean? Counselor West?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Well, you guys did a good job this year. Everybody's working good together. I mean, that's, that's, I will say that, that's, it's a mental pleasure being back on and working with a, a good group of people, so. Okay, let's go ahead and, uh, you have in front of you a, uh, a plot. Resolution approving, approving, approving the final plot for the Etzel Farm, first addition in Lynn County.
This is one of those two falls within the two mile radius to the city, uh, gets the opportunity to approve. Has to sign up on the plat.
Yeah, they must. So if you go ahead and make a motion. I move we accept resolution oh six twenty twenty-one dash oh four. Trump made a motion to accept resolution.
Second.
TJ seconded. Neither, no, neither roll, roll call neither. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, Saint May. Motion carries.
And you guys were lucky enough to have two this month, so there's another one.
Yeah, there's another one. This is the, um, the other one, approving the final plat for the Hailview Edition. That's where you're talking, that's where the law is at or something. Yeah, just. So, so will I make a, put a motion to accept the resolution oh six dash two oh two one dash oh five?
I move to approve resolution oh six two oh two one dash zero five.
TJ made a motion to accept the resolution. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Chester seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's all new business. We get to leave the old business now. Now you're up.
Awesome, sorry.
About going to sleep.
I just, I'm not good at sitting for long periods of time. So really, I'm just here to give you an update.
This is a special event for the car show, yep.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So you guys should have a copy of our insurance now for that. I just kinda wanna give you a rundown of what's going on unless you want me to wait for you a little bit longer. Okay, um, I've talked to all the businesses in town, so they all know what's going on, including the bank. They have flyers. And we have permission from the bank and the school to use their lots. We will be having, there's breakfast at the historical society. Lunch will be at Reed's and Tittler's. And also we will be having Chris's Kettle Corn and Dan and Victoria at Kirby. They live in town here. They own the Amanda Bakery. They will be setting up and they are donating back also. And we will be having a DJ. The music, it's not gonna be blaring loud or anything like that, but it's gonna be set up up here. He's gonna be calling off raffle numbers. He's going to be calling off raffle numbers and play music and all the trophies when it comes time to announce that. We are going to make sure the back of the historical building here is open for the people in the apartments to be able to get in and out on the other side of there so we can use this. I guess I should be asking, can we use this little lot right here?
That's a city lot, isn't it?
It's a street.
Yes. But we're gonna, we're not going to kick them out like we used to kick them out because they have their own parking lot there now, so we're just going to leave it open so they can get in and out if they need to, instead of making these people upset. I left messages with lefties, Ken and Betty, that if they wanted anything different this year, if they wanted me to post any different signs, anything like that, to let me know. I still plan on putting the sign that they're open up and making sure that we're available, or everybody can get in and out of there. We plan on leaving a spot open for the people picking up the mail when they need to come pick it up. We have four porta-johnies coming. We're putting up trash cans. And there's no beer sold outside.
Or he has to kind of block his streets.
Oh, did I have that on there the last time?
I think I just copied it so the highlighting didn't come across and show.
Okay, that's okay. Turning in front of the church up here, so the street will be blocked from the church right here going this way.
It's dirt street.
By Reed's, by Reed's there?
No, the one next up.
The one next up, okay.
Dirt street.
Dirt street.
Right. And then we'll do it like we did last year. We start out blocking further back and as we get closer to the show starting, if we don't need to block it so far back, we can move it up. Does that make sense? Okay.
Are the dots on here the redirection of the traffic?
Yeah.
So then you're going to go then, down there at Roosevelt Street.
Actually, I should double check and look at that. What I want to do, where we did last year is we blocked it off.
We were about the fire station.
Yeah.
Right, which is good news. We might block it off up here, I think that's what we did last year, so they went up this way. Because we didn't know how big we were going to get. So as it got like nine thirty, ten o'clock, then we opened this up so they could go this way because we didn't need to do that.
So then you may go ahead, or up to Mootark.
Yeah, to start.
To start out, yeah.
Just to start. But people who live there and everything, they can still get in and out, it's just the show cars, we want them to be able to come in. And if we have to use part of the school parking lot and stuff, we don't want all the traffic going through. Okay.
I don't see why anybody would get to that.
Up to Mootark and take a corner. What do you put up here then?
Just start out.
Yeah.
I don't picture us being as big as we were last year, some people do. I just don't, I think last year, everybody was sick of COVID and just wanted to get out and it just happened.
Yeah, a huge turnout, right?
We, two hundred and fifty, which is tremendous. So we planned big and, you know, then if it's not that big, we're safe. Any questions for me? Think I forgot anything or?
I think I've already done mine.
This is already approved, just pending insurance, is that correct?
I'll get with you on Friday and make sure where you want the science, but.
Okay, that would be awesome.
The Friday before.
Yeah. I'm good?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. How good is it?
You too.
Next item up is the Public Works Dump Truck Body Replacement. Guy's got some other information. Steve, you can go ahead and share with him, this time you've got a couple quotes in front of you.
Yep. I got a quote from Futureline and also a quote from Henderson. I'm mixing, there's a couple of quotes on Snowblades, just because it was a suggestion. We look at those too, that's not on the agenda for tonight, I'll talk about that later. The Henderson quote is very detailed, it's three pages long. What it boils down to is a very good, high-quality bed installed for nineteen thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. I'm sure it's probably the best made, but they also basically required that they put a new hoist on the truck because they, he was here, he looked at our truck, looked at our hoist, there's nothing wrong with our hoist, it's just that he says, I wouldn't be comfortable putting a new, our new bed on that hoist. So that quote includes a new hoist. Now that's a, like I said, that's a super heavy-duty, very long-lasting bed.
That is steel bed?
It's a steel bed, and they're both steel beds. Like the Henderson one has the, the AR 402 floor, which is a harder steel, which should hold up longer, et cetera. That's what he recommended. You know, and that's great, that's super, it's, Henderson is very well-known for their bodies. I went to Futureline for the other quote and the reason there's two quotes is I had him separate out the hoist. Since we got a quote from Henderson with a new hoist, I thought we ought to have one from them with a new hoist. So the two quotes from Futureline about the bed are identical except for the hoist. You can see it's, it's about a twenty-four hundred dollar, excuse me, a thirty-four hundred dollar difference to put a new hoist on it. The Futureline salesman is confident that our hoist will continue to function and work just fine, that there's no reason to upgrade that hoist at this time, so.
You know, we talked last time, question whether our hoist would pull down.
Yes, it does.
And it does.
Yes.
Has been resolved.
Yes, that's been resolved. I've got two, my opinions on this are, I guess I'm, I'm playing both sides of the fields, the Henderson equipment is awesome. But if our goal here is really just to make our chassis last another five or, the truck itself, five or so years, I can't really just by having you guys spend nineteen thousand dollars on that really good bed. And if we spend nineteen thousand on it, we would probably want to possibly reuse that hoist, that bed and hoist and everything down the road.
On the new truck.
But what if we have decided that that size of truck is not the size of truck we need in the future? So I tend to lean towards the Futureline quote and leave the hoist, I mean, you're talking a twelve thousand dollar upgrade to put a new body on it, which solves our key problem of the old body breaking all the time and not being heavy enough and the right kind of body for what we're doing. And it easily should last another five or so years until we're probably ready to do something with the chassis of the truck and even more than that. But, you know, to me, that's the route, that's what I would recommend to you as far as these boxes go. The other thing, just for food for thought on this whole dump truck thing, just fishing around on the internet, I found a 2020 F-550, which is a size of truck we have with a diesel engine, which is what we have with a, this one in particular one had a stainless body, which is like a fifteen, not hundred dollar upgrade, we don't necessarily need stainless, but with the tailgate sander and a brand-new plow on it, it's ninety-seven thousand dollars. Now, I'm not saying we'd have to pay ninety-seven thousand, we probably, you know, maybe if there's discounts or whatever, but that was the advertised price on that truck for basically what we have only at 2020. I'm of the opinion, after the trouble we've had with the diesel, the next time we, unless something changes, the next time we buy a truck, we should get a gas truck. We've put eleven thousand miles on this truck in ten years, that's eleven hundred miles a year. We're not saving anything in fuel. And it's a fifteen thousand dollar upgrade to go from a gas engine to a diesel engine. It's got more horsepower and more torque, but we don't even need that. We're just running to the quarry at Robbins once in a while and pushing some. So a plain gas 2020 chassis, Ford chassis, is fifty thousand bucks. You'd spend another twenty or more getting it outfitted, but, you know, so that's just reference items in this whole scenario. And then there's not a lot out there for sale, but my estimation is the, the old body is an aluminum landscape body and the sander is completely, a completely separate unit, if you don't know. And that sander has actually got good value to it, they're about seven thousand dollars new for a light model. I feel like we could get twenty-five hundred to three thousand bucks out of it, selling it. And the old landscaping body, we haven't been able to get it fixed yet the last break, but we will, you know, that's maybe a five hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollar sale item. And, you know, that brings, should easily bring this upgrade down under ten thousand bucks, if you, all things considered, if we can get that kind of money out of our used equipment. And, and really should make our truck last another five years would be my estimation, so. But that's the information I got, I reached out a couple other places and they weren't really interested in quoting, you know, they were farther away. I mean, Manche, Henderson's in Manchester, Futureline's here in Cedar Rapids, and that was the two best, there's a Monroe Truck Equipment in, in Wisconsin and they, they were real anxious to quote, they, they like selling complete units more than they like upfitting, so. But that's what I've got. You want to talk about a snow blade before you make your decision on the body? Not that we could vote on it tonight, but.
I make one comment.
Yep.
If we would should decide if we don't need the hoist.
Yeah.
And we got that cheaper body, you could throw the snowplow blade in for the same price.
Yeah, yeah, more or less, yeah.
More or less.
Yeah, I mean, because the.
If we need the snowplow blade.
Yeah, and it's hard to, yes, our snowplow blade will go a little bit longer, for sure. I know it's going to need work, that main hinge joint is sloppy and it's going to have to have work, I don't know what that's going to cost, you're not going to know until you actually tear it apart and figure out if it needs welding or, or if it's just a matter of putting bushings and pins in it, just not going to know, but.
My opinion on, no, just my opinion with the old one is if you keep it and don't do anything with it and it goes out and wears out, it's going to cost us more money.
Right.
Usually, you know, so I'd just soon be proactive and look ahead on it is to wait for something to happen if it wears out.
Sure.
But, you know, just look ahead because it will cost, will, will cost you to, you know, if it goes down where you do it.
And in season, yeah, you're not going to, you're going to pay through the nose to get somebody to come plow for you if you don't have a plow.
And then trying to find one maybe, you know. On these snowplow beds, what's the difference between this one and this one?
You're basically talking a V plow versus a straight blade. So right now, we have a, a straight blade.
Yep.
And it's worked fine for years. The reason I got the quote for the V plow is because of all the dead ends in town. A V plow actually has a, what they call it, the scoop function, where you, not only does it V back if you need that, but it folds them forward. So you're, you're collecting more snow when you.
Pushing ahead.
When you come to the end of the street and it's, it's, would cut down a lot of time at the end of these dead ends. The other benefit of that particular D X T plow, they call it, there's two more actually, it, the, the blades taper up as they get out to the end of the blade, which helps get the snow up. Last winter was a good indication, all the snow we had, that straight blade's going to be this tall going down the road, that D X T is going to be this tall, which will give you more chance to get snow up and over that curve. And then the other function, we don't necessarily need down pressure, but that's the only blade that Boss makes. And, and these blades are only Boss plows because that's the kind of mount we have on our trucks and it's expensive to change out completely. But it has actual down pressure, so in the areas where we're backdragging, it will actually put some force on it. A traditional plow like the one we have, it's just the weight of the plow holding it to the ground. A D X T, the D stands for down pressure, so it gives us a function that we never had before. The control works, the mounts work and all that business. So it's fifteen hundred dollars more for the, for the V plow. I feel like it has benefit, I feel like it will increase the sale value of our truck down the road if it's got a V play, V plow hanging on it rather than a straight blade. Whether that's worth fifteen hundred bucks, that's for you to decide, but, and if you even want to replace the blade, and it is literally not on the agenda for the blade, but we can definitely wait till July and you can ponder the blade part of it. But I, I thought you want to know about it before you make a decision on the body, you know, so. Any questions?
Is there any wages to find out what it's going to cost to fix the one we got now?
I'd have to dig it out of storage and take it apart, I mean.
I mean, is that being realistic or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, no, it's fine. We could pull it out and, and tip it up and pull the springs off and, and get those joints apart and see what it looks like. That blade we already have, it pivots side to side and we've already broke out the end of the frame on the main frame that attaches to the, I can't remember what that is, I should have looked that one up, that was two years ago, I think. So that pivot point actually broke, I was plowing right out here by the old fire station and, and my blade took off to the left about a foot. And it's because that bushing or basically the, the end of the frame broke out and allowed the bolt that holds the, the blade to pivot like this to come out of the framework. And we were lucky, it didn't snow much after that, I was almost done with the, with the plowing and Futureline got us a new, we actually had to buy the whole new frame piece. I was thinking it was eleven or twelve hundred bucks to repair that and we got back together in ten days or so and we didn't have any snow, but.
Is there a resale value on that?
Yeah, yeah, I figured that's worth five hundred to a thousand, depending on who's looking at it, you know, Dan Sherman's got a lot full of used plows and stuff that he uses for his commercial plowing business, he'd be, I'd bet you all over our Sulters sander too, because he's doing more of that.
I would recommend that we get a new snow blade.
Well, probably to be official, we should wait until next month to actually, because it wasn't on the agenda, so.
Wait next month on that.
But the body, we should get started because they're also out three months or so on getting those made, so.
Can you feel the, do you feel that the cheaper body is what we're going with?
And I don't, and I, I don't feel it's a low-quality body, I just feel like it's not, you know, you've got premium and then you've got good, you know, you've got the, the workhorse and we'd be buying the workhorse, we're just not getting that, that superior, you know, but it's not warranted. If we're putting together a brand-new truck, I would want to go the Henderson route, I think.
Right.
You know, for a truck that we might keep for fifteen or twenty years, I think you want to go that way, it would pay in the end, so. But doing what we're doing, I feel like that, that rugby, that body from Futureline is absolutely fine, so. And I don't feel there's any problem with our hoist, it's never given us an issue, it gets greased regularly, so.
Do you have more thoughts on it, counsel?
No, I agree.
So that's, we're, we're looking at the cheaper quote.
I'll make a motion if we get the body that Guy recommends from Futureline.
From Futureline for twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
Target. Being moved by Chester, seconded by Trump, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And go ahead and we'll discuss approval of the update of the C I P plan for the city of Alvinette as presented by Ecom. Think you have that written in the packet too? They just made corrections from the last, the time they were here.
Um, yeah, they just asked if there was any feedback, comments, questions from counsel, we hadn't received anything, so we were hoping everybody was on board and wanting to move forward with the C I P plan that they presented.
Counsel, any discussion?
I see nothing wrong there.
Weird, okay, well, go ahead and. Yeah, okay, well, go ahead and make a motion to move, go ahead and move. Move with the, the capital improvement plan by Ecom for fiscal year of twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven.
Sum up.
Motion by TJ, second? What's that? Seconded by Bozenberg, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries? We'll keep following discussion and comments, anybody have anything else you want to add? TJ?
No.
Good, Chester?
No.
Okay, good.
God, please, I am.
I like to see the curb back out there on Roosevelt, looks nice where you got it showing.
Yeah, yeah, it turned out okay.
Looks good. And the grass was coming along fine, it looked like.
We mowed it for the first time today, as a matter of fact, so.
We, we hit that grass the right.
Yeah.
Because we've seen it there and.
Yep, that was good timing, turned out okay, pretty happy. Now we just need to get it a little bit older and then I can spray it for the few weeds that are coming and we'll be in good shape, so.
Do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Yes, I have a motion. Trump seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries?